I'd like to remind everybody here tonight that this meeting is being recorded and live streaming. There's information on that. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and have a meeting in order. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, like the welcome everybody here tonight, it's nice to see some different faces here. Live meetings are coming back and glad everybody could be here. So with that, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. The agenda should be the same as what was sent out. Everybody got a copy of it? Did anybody have anything to add or any questions about the agenda? If not, we're looking for a motion to approve the agenda. So.
Second.
Motion by Director Trilio, second by Director Dupong to approve the agenda as presented. Does anybody oppose? Okay, unanimous consent agenda is approved. Consent agenda, did anybody have any questions or anything they want to pull out of the consent agenda? If not, we're looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So.
Got a motion by Director Trilio, second by Director Marcus to approve the consent agenda. Is anybody opposed? No, unanimous consent approved. Public comments, do we have anybody here for public comments this evening? Okay, two of you. I'll ask, what are you going to address the board on?
The educational trips to Spain.
Educational trips to Spain, both of you on that? So that is, you know, at this point of the agenda, we can go ahead, what I'd like you to... Have you guys looked over the rules for the, as far as public comment? You know, we're usually limited to about three minutes per person, no more than 15 minutes total on discussion with that. Also, address the board as a whole, you know, and we'll try to answer any questions we have at that point. Go ahead and just, I'll have you introduce yourself and then just move forward.
Okay, Paul, we're reading on.
Okay.
Should I stand up first?
If you don't mind, just did introduce yourself to everyone who works on it.
Sure, I'm Stacy Hoffler and as a parent of five students that enrolled at Boston High School, I support moving forward with the planning of the Spanish trips cost to Spain or if international travel is not possible due to COVID in a US territory like Puerto Rico. The school-sponsored trip is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for many students who would not otherwise have the ability or means to travel outside the Midwest. Traveling to a different cultural area has a positive impact on a student's life. Regardless of gender, ethnicity, and socioeconomic class, students who took educational trips between the ages of 12 and 18 were more likely to be academically and financially successful, enjoyed school more, and felt a greater connection to their world, and reported that traveling influenced their career choices. There are many benefits of travel pursuits, such as immersion into a foreign-speaking country or area helps rapidly improve conversational language and cultural nonverbal cues, and allows hands-on practice of these skills. Non-language subjects such as oral history, government, economics, and math are also learned, as is cultural sensitivity. Students learn to step outside their comfort zone and become more confident by learning how to navigate different cities and venture transit options, trying new foods, and participating in different activities. Keeping our students safe and healthy should be a top priority on this trip, and while nothing is 100% guaranteed, we have the knowledge and tools to travel as safely as possible. The latest research is showing that aircraft cabins are among the safest of public indoor environments. A recent study conducted by the US Department of Defense supports a conclusion that the risk of COVID-19 exposure onboard planes is almost zero thanks to advanced air filtration systems, required mask wearing, and diligent cleaning protocols. Travel protection plans provide cancel-for-any-reason waivers. For example, if within 30 days of travel, we need to cancel our trip for any reason, we will be reimbursed for 75% of non-refundable cancellation fees. There are several things we can do to keep our students healthy while on the trip. There are COVID-19 and/or flu vaccinations, COVID-19 testing, mask hand sanitizer, social distancing, wellness checks every day while on the trip, taking immune-boosting supplements before and during the trip, pack a COVID kit, which can include thermometers, pulse oximeters, OTC fever reducers, and expectorants in order to catch and treat any symptoms early, and be aware of other developing treatments and preventatives for COVID-19 as they become available. Since this is not a mandatory trip and participants would need to understand that they must follow every safety procedure and rule, know that like everything in life, there is risk involved, such as becoming ill or having this thing canceled. Our students have missed out on so many big things because of COVID. Planning a trip and having to cancel it would be rough, but completely dismissing the trip and not trying to plan it because something might happen is premature. With the approval of vaccinations for the five to 11-year-olds in the very near future, promising and promising new treatments on the horizon, we can have hope that the COVID-19 case numbers and severity will significantly decrease. The Boston School District has done a great job balancing student safety and personal choice and I have full confidence that they can plan a safe and educational trip for our students. And for example, stats of today, October 19th, 2021. In Spain, there are 75 or 78% of its total population is fully vaccinated. Puerto Rico is 72%, Minnesota is 59%, and the United States is 56%. And in Spain, there are 24 COVID cases per 100 people right now. In Puerto Rico, there are four cases per 100 people, 100,000 people, sorry. Minnesota is 50 cases and the United States is 177.
Thank you, students. Any feedback from the board or do you have any questions for the board or anything else like that? Appreciate you coming in and stating, you said you had five?
Yeah.
Students, how many on the trip?
Two.
Two, okay.
And I have her paperwork too for to be attached with your four-minute information as well.
Well, thank you. James, go ahead.
Hi, I'm James Menke. Also speaking on behalf of the future possible Spain trip, I'm coming from a different side of it. I've had two kids through the school. I guess my oldest daughter traveled Greece, Italy, chose a chaperone. I always tell everybody about when I traveled to Boston, that's like, I believe the history in Boston. And then I went to Greece, Italy, and I was like, yeah, a little different. Just, and then Jenna, she went with the last Spain trip. It's, 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 you can imagine what it's like for somebody of that age going to Greece, Italy, or Spain. Just the culture shock for me, it was just unbelievable with the difference going over there. We went to, when I went to Rome, very comfortable place to be. I thought it was great, felt comfortable everywhere I went. Surprising, never knew that Italian was so close to Spanish. We had, one of the girls on the trip, whatever, they were a great help on communicating. It's just things like that. I know both my daughters said something they'll never forget. So hopefully, when you guys consider something like this, hopefully, take something like that consideration. I think that's... I'm gonna, I'm going off the cuff here.
That's all right. That's your public speaking.
Even though I know we don't.
I really appreciate you coming in because, I mean, as directors, you know, this is... We've approved this trip before in the past. There's some circumstances now around the world that kind of come into play. It's, it's nice to hear, you know, parents too about it, you know. Your kids are gonna be the ones going, you know, and you've been on them before and stuff.
And I know that. One of my kids would also be, would be going on this trip also.
So definitely appreciate you coming in and letting us know how you feel.
Yep, thanks for letting us come in.
Anything else from any of the directors? We'll move on, and so we'll go on to our constituents' reports, and we have the elementary student leaders that are gonna present tonight. And welcome back, I'm glad to have you here.
Thank you Superintendent Chase and members of the board. We are glad to be back this year and we've had our first student leader meeting and have selected all of our students. So today I have with me Cash Radke, Haley Sunquist, and Brielle Dupong. I am Amanda Weiner, the student leader advisor, if you, if I haven't met you yet. So we're gonna start with Brielle. She's gonna talk about the student leaders that were selected this year for the elementary.
Hi, so the student leaders this year for 4th grade are Brantley Lansver, Cash Holland, Emma Howard, and Kai Stanford. And Sanford. In 5th grade, we have Bethany Richardson, Cash Radke, Hannah Fonder, Landon Bushy, Liv Nelson, and Luke Whedon. And then for 6th grade, we have Braylon Sater, Brielle Dupong, Clayton Lennis, Ellis Weiner, Haley Sunquist, Jonas Johnson, Lexi Illes, and Noah Martenson. And we celebrated with homecoming with fun dress-up days. Monday was America Day, Tuesday was Pattern Day, Wednesday was Royalty Day, and Thursday was Hollywood Day, and Friday was Greyhound's Pride Day. Um, we, we sold cake pops at our stands. We sold eye blacks, glitter eye blacks, and buttons. We sold like 15 dozen cake pops and buttons were sold, homecoming buttons. And every day, there's like this big rush that came through, and we ran out of cake pops like every day. We started Mogulson Mondays where we read upcoming events, a joke, and a growth mindset message over the intercom every Monday for the whole school to hear.
Student leaders, do you have anything else you want to add about homecoming or anything else that you'd like to tell the board today? No? You have any questions for them, board members?
Anything? I want to know who made the K-Pops.
It was Sweet Treats by Sheila. She's in Winger.
Okay.
They were... Yeah, huge hit.
Great, well, thank you. Thanks, great job, everybody.
Thank you. Student leaders, you can log off if you'd like.
Okay, with that, we will go to high school student council report. Glad to have you all back too, it's been a long time since we've had a report.
Yeah. For those of you who don't know, I'm just gonna do a quick intro to Sophia and then you can take over. I began this year as the student council advisor for the high school. I work between both the elementary and the high school with Amanda Weiner as the speech-language pathology assistant, and Sarah Beth Key, if you don't know who I am. And so this year is my first year working as a student council advisor, and I am super excited to be working with such a group, great group of kids. They, they've just been wonderful. So Sophia's gonna talk a little bit about homecoming.
Um, we did a bunch of stuff during homecoming week, and for dress-up days, we came up with a bunch of great ideas. And I asked some of my classmates, and ones that they said that was their favorite was Little White Lie Day. So that was pretty fun. And for the games, we did volleyball on Wednesday, and of course, the staff won again, just like every other year. And we also did dodgeball and Kahoot, and I know a lot of the students had a lot of fun with Kahoot and learning more about our teachers. Um, for the dance, a lot of people showed up. It was a great turnout and a lot of people had fun that way. Um, some of the student council members from the high school went over to the elementary two mornings and sold buttons while the younger student leaders sold cake pops and eye blacks. Um, for the money, we earned over $1,855 total, and that was after all expenses were paid for, like the crowns and flowers for the court, buttons, and pop and water for the dance. For coronation, we had two of our candidates online during our coronation and were able to include them all in coronation. The homecoming king and queen was Warren Nelson and Ashton Wolfe. And the student council members did an amazing job with setting up and taking down for coronation and worked really hard overall throughout homecoming week. And at the football game on Friday, the court was escorted on trucks during halftime. That's all I have.
Questions or anything? Sarah, thank you for taking on that role, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
We really enjoy having student council come in and report to us, and hopefully we can get them here in the future in person.
That is the goal, that is the goal. Yeah, I'm hoping that we'll be able to make it to every meeting just to give you an update on where we're at and what we're doing. I'm very excited to take on some projects this year, and I'm hoping we can collaborate with the elementary student leaders as well and make a good impact on the community.
Thank you, and same with Amanda and your group and stuff. We really look forward to hearing from you. I think it's important as a board to hear what our student leadership has to say about what's taking place in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Guys can check out.
Thank you.
Other item of note for the board, student council. Amanda, they've been invited to a summit in Nevis on November the 10th, so the student council will be going over to Nevis High School to attend the student council summit. We haven't been able to do that in a while, so we're looking forward to that opportunity for our kids to get out there and pick up some new strategies and skills.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to finance. We have our annual audit report and let's see, Amanda?
Yes.
I didn't get your ass.
Amanda scans it.
Scans it, okay.
Do you guys mind if I sit at this table to...
Nope, you go right ahead.
...paper on front of me? I'll probably drop it if I sit there. All right. So like you said, I'm Amanda Skansen with Brady Martson Associates, Brian Opsol. Normally comes to present, but he is unfortunately at some meetings tonight, so he could not make it. But we will go through the other part. So I think that's within the order, the first one should look like this, and have a little indent down at the bottom. And let's, we'll get one thing out of the way here first. You'll notice that they say draft. In the past, they didn't say draft, we bring you nice bound blue copies. However, due to how much federal funds you expended this year, you were in need of a single audit. And one of the major programs that we had to test this year was those ESR dollars. And the federal, the federal government is still working on the compliance supplement for those, so we've done everything we can, but now we're waiting for them to issue that guidance. So there's probably going to be a few more questions from your staff that will have to do some, some testing of the things that they put in that compliance supplement. But that is the only thing within the financial statements that potentially could have a change. So that is why they're still in draft, and as soon as that comes out, we will wrap things up. All right, so this first report is the communication with governance, and it basically tells you if there's any new standards that were adopted in this year. And thankfully, in this crazy year, there was no new standards that we had to implement. It also discusses the accounting estimates that are included within your report, which are basically the net pension liability and the OPEB liability. Those are the main estimates that you have within your report. It tells council that there was no difficulties encountered in performing your audit. Things went very smoothly with your staff. We did propose some adjustments, and those have been posted to your system, but there was no disagreements with your staff, and things went fairly well. And that is the gist of that letter. The next one is a management report. And occasionally, as we're going through your internal controls of your district, we'll suggest different things that you could potentially do better. And this year, we didn't have any of those, so the management report consists only of some graphs for you. So your general fund unassigned balance would be anything that is not restricted by the state or federal government that you have or committed or assigned by the board or the district. So these are funds that are available to use, use as you see fit. And so you'll notice that your fund balance has increased, and if you use that table and the next table, it shows what a, the percentage of your unassigned fund balance in comparison with your general fund expenditures. And so typically, we like to see that number between 15% to 20%. However, it's gonna vary by district of what you need to be, what you need. If, first day, you have plans for a project going forward that you're not bonding for, you'd want that number to go higher, and there could be other reasons that you'd want it to be higher or lower. But within that 15% to 20% range is probably a pretty good target to meet your ongoing bills. And the next one is your food service net income or loss before transfers. And this year, Food Service Fund did a great job this year, as they have in the past, or in the previous year, and this year, most schools ran off of SFSPE, the summer food service program, which has a higher reimbursement rate than the regular national school lunch program. So that was likely what contributed to your increase over the prior year of your food service net income. The next table will show your community service net income or loss before transfers. And you have a profit of $30,000, which is, is great for the Community Service Fund. Your Community Service Fund operates very well. That, the same can be true set for all districts. So it's great to see you have a positive fund, or a positive net income within that fund. All right, and then we're gonna move over to the large section. And I skip around a lot in here. And I start to talk kind of fast, so if you want to talk about anything in more detail, just stop me and we'll, we'll discuss it. So we'll start on page two. And that is the independent auditor's report. And it states, it states what the responsibility of the district is and the responsibility of the auditor, and then it contains our opinions. And the district received an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, which is the best opinion you can get from us as your auditor. And it also states some other required supplementary information that is included within your report. And that is the gist of that. On page five, starts the management discussion and analysis. And basically, it takes your year and tries to put it in a verbal context. So it takes the current year to prior year approach and takes more of a verbalized how the year went. So I'm not, I'm gonna skip over that, but it is a pretty easy read if anyone's curious of things, how the year went. So we'll skip to page 12, which is the statement of net position. And so this is essentially a balance sheet that contains all of the assets and liabilities of the district. So if you were to get regular financial statements, this is above and beyond what you would normally see as it contains your capital assets and any long-term debt. One thing I was gonna point out here is your cash position from the prior year is down quite a bit, but that's due to your construction. So if you take out that construction component, that the cash that you had on hand last year, your cash position is up over the prior year, which is always good to see. And then on the next page, it breaks it down to your net position. So your net position is basically what you have left over after you have your assets and your liabilities that are being used, your assets are being used by those liabilities. So the net position is what you have left, and it breaks down into three components. The net investment in capital assets is all of your capital assets less the debt associated with them. And then the restricted section is anything that the state or federal government has given you that you have not spent yet. So those dollars have to be spent in a specific way related to the restriction. And then you'll see the bottom line there is the unrestricted, and so that's a large negative number. And that's mainly due to the net pension liability and the OPEB liability due to your involvement within TRA and PERA. So if we're to back all of those out because you can't actually pay off that liability, you would end up with a positive net position. So that, those net pension liabilities cause this large swing in that number. So it's not something to be concerned of on this level. You still have funds to pay your bills, so it looks concerning, but if you back that off, it's not. So then the next one we're gonna talk about is page 15, which is the balance sheet in a way that you would typically see them. It doesn't have any of those long-term assets or long-term liabilities. And it breaks down your funds by major funds. So there's three major funds for the district, the general fund, debt service, and capital project funds. And then it combines the non-major governmental funds, which is gonna be your Community Service Fund and your Food Service Fund. And then in the same, same context, that fund balance is what you have left over, broken down into slightly different categories. The non-spendable portions are just things that you've already spent, like inventory, restricted or things restricted by the state or federal government. Committed would be things that you've committed to, the board has committed, and assigned are things that the office can, can assign for specific uses in the future. And there's details on page 38 of what makes up those numbers specifically. On page 17 is the income statement for those major funds and non-major funds. And you'll see the revenue from federal sources of the 1.1 million is how you ended up in that single audit bucket of why we have drafts today. All right, and then on page 19 starts the notes to the basic financial statements. And within the notes are the details of everything that you can find on the balance sheet. So if you have questions of what your long-term debt number consisted of, there's a note associated with that will break down all of the debt. Unless there's something that you wanted to discuss specifically, I'm gonna skip over that large section, and we're gonna go to page 45. All right, and page 45 is the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund. So it shows your original and final budget compared to the actual amounts. So your revenues were slightly higher than your, your final budget due to higher, higher than anticipated state resources, which is, is good to see, but you're still, still very close within percentage-wise. And then your expenditures as well are slightly below what you had expected. I think that holds true at a lot of schools as we're trying to be conservative in, in the unknown that we have found ourselves in. All right, and then we're going to skip over to page 51. And 51 and 52 are the balance sheet and income statement for those non-major funds. So they're gonna give you the detail of the food service and the community service funds that we saw earlier in, as an aggregate combined non-major funds. All right, and on page 53, there is a schedule of changes in fund balances, which basically breaks down all of the state's restrictions in how they give you your revenue and what you've expended it on. So if you're curious what those restrictions are made up of, you can see how much revenue you received for LTFM, how much you spent, and then where you ended up at. So it's kind of nice to look at in some context that way, and it breaks it down by each fund. All right, the next report, page 54, is the independent auditor's report on Minnesota legal compliance. The state of Minnesota requires us to test various things, including contracts and bidding, deposits and investments, conflicts of interest, public indebtedness, claims and dispersments, miscellaneous provisions, and then uniform financial accounting and reporting standards. And they give us this very long checklist of things that we need to check with the school to see if you're abiding by all the Minnesota legal compliance issues. And we have found no issues during that testing, so there is a clean opinion with no findings. On the next page is our independent auditor's report over internal control. Internal control, excuse me. So during our, the course of our audit, we review your internal control structure to see if there are anything of concern. And so we are able to issue significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, material weaknesses being the worst of the two. And so the school district has two findings that we consider to be significant deficiencies, and they're very common findings. They're later in the report, but I'll just tell you what they are now. So they are segregation of duties just due to the size of the staff. It's hard to have mitigating controls due to how many people are in the office. And then the other finding is over financial statement preparation as we prepare the financial statements for you. All right, but other, and those are two very common findings that most schools in this area receive. The next report is the independent auditor's report over compliance of each major federal program. So this report is the one that we are kind of waiting on. And if there, currently, there are no findings within this report. However, we are not done with our testing. But if anything does come up, we'll, we'll be sure to communicate that with the district, and so there's no surprises.
Does this have to do with ESR funds and just the way they're spread out?
It does.
That's the...
So on page 59, you'll see your schedule of expenditures and federal awards, and it breaks down all of the different buckets of money that you got from the state, or, excuse me, from the federal government. And on page... And on page sixty-one, we'll show you which programs of the awards we tested. So we tested two programs, one being the child nutrition cluster and the second being the education stabilization fund, which are the Esser dollars. And so those are the ones that we're just not complete yet. And you'll notice down at the bottom, it says asks if the oddity qualifies as a low-risk oddity. And it says no, but that is just due to not having a single audit in the past two years. So that's nothing to be concerned or anything that you've done. It's just a requirement of the single audit testing. The next two pages are the findings that I already discussed, the segregation of duties and the financial statement prep. And then page sixty-four and sixty, or excuse me, sixty-four is just your response to the findings. And these are findings that are ongoing, so the responses, I don't believe, have changed much. And then the very last page of the report is the uniform financial compliance report that is submitted to the state of Minnesota along with your audit report. And that was a lot of information. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions? It is a lot in there. The liability with that pension, that adds up to almost six million dollars, doesn't it?
Yes.
You don't have to dig back in a number, but remember.
It's actually right here. It's five point six million dollars this year. And so that's going to be mainly TRA, but a portion of it's PERA. But then compounding with that, they also have these deferred inflows and deferred outflows that also add to them. And I won't bore you with the details, but they're also on your report.
Is that the thing that just recently changed not too long ago?
We're probably like four years old, five years. Yep, so basically, the PERA and TRA funds are underfunded, much like social security. So they've forecasted out what the underfunding is and allocated out to all of the members or in TRA's case, all of the school districts. So then it takes how much your salary is compared to everybody else's salary, and that's the percentage that you get essentially for both of the funds. So the underfunding is is massive, and the small schools still receive a very large number.
So the unassigned fund balance. Granted, Esser dollars, everything else is boosting that a little bit. How is it, is that most districts that are running into that, that their unassigned is higher because of that?
I think so, yes. Because a lot of, since the Esser dollars don't have the plan versus supplement rule, so you can use things that you've already just typically done. Whereas in like the title world, you have to do new things. So you can use those funds to pay for salaries that you were going to pay for anyway. So then that's contributing to your higher fund balance in a lot of cases.
And you save that in most cases. And it makes sense. Everybody's kind of getting the same.
Right.
Any other questions? Got a lot of paper you can read.
If anything comes up, feel free to contact Brian or myself, and we can answer any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you.
No problem.
Fund balance report. We are still operating under the budget that you adopted in June. And so we're still tracking along the way we should be if you look at percentages and things. After tonight's meeting, assuming that you approve the support staff, then we will have the updated budget. We'll be working on that, and we will get that to you in November for adoption. You know, we, obviously, some of our expenses will increase a little bit. But we did budget, we did budget for raises in that initial budget. And some of our revenues will be higher. And then we will also have an up-to-date revenue forecast in terms of student count based on the current numbers. So not much has changed in the fund balance report at this or in the financial reports right now. The one thing I did want to draw your attention to is the building bond account. We have paid for the blinds. They've been taken out of this. We have a final request for payment from ICS on behalf of Bradbury STEM and because of the retainage that we have. And that will be, the total on that is a hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. So when we are done paying that, we will have some money left over in this building bond account. A hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and point three dollars will be left that we haven't assigned to a specific thing yet. And that's something that the board will need to give us some direction on. We have some projects in LTFM that we can accomplish with that. For example, we have some tuck pointing on the elementary courtyard, I believe. Was it the south wall? Do you remember?
South side of the new gym.
South side, yeah. There's some tuck pointing there that needs to be done. And I think the estimate before was around ninety, somewhere in there. So it's probably a little bit more now, but that's something that that is kind of one of those should be done within the next five years or so. That's something we could do with this money. There's a, there's a variety of things we can do as long as they are not connected to the nineteen thirty-seven structure. So we can, as a board, you'll need to be thinking about how you want us to channel this.
Is that something maybe remember from oversight because we still have committee established and stuff? And maybe LTFM, I mean, I went out to the former of LTFM, but maybe sit down and kind of look at those options? I mean, maybe that might be the best way. I don't want to just, I need to see there. All right, just a quick question of the doors and stuff. Has this been settled? Or has this been taken care of?
Doors are just all fine up there.
So we're ready to.
Is there anything, anything else outstanding, the bunch of those warranty issues?
Quite a couple of things with RV and B electric have to come back and fix. It's chasing, we discussed this the other day. There is three doors at the elementary. They're still.
Austin was in on this.
They lasted.
Yeah.
Probably stayed on.
Yep. We, even that, before we pay that retainer off, we need with oversight. Just verify.
Okay.
But you guys agree with that?
Yep.
Maybe that way you can just.
Yeah, well, I've been making him wait for, we got the bill on the sixth. And I told him then I wasn't going to pay, we weren't going to pay it until things were done, so. Yeah, or a virtual meeting or something we could do, yeah. Okay, I will set up a virtual meeting.
Hate to pay that too if we still have stuff outstanding. Anything else with fund balance?
That's it for now.
Okay, so moving on to item six point three. We have a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars toward the FFA program from Boston Rotary. So with this, we look at, accepting this donation, well, thanks for it. It was nice to see the FFA program getting, guaranteeing support. But with that, we have a motion to accept that two hundred and fifty dollars from Boston Rotary.
Motion to accept the donation.
Second. A motion by Director Marcus, second by Director DePong to accept the donation of two hundred and fifty dollars toward the FFA program from Boston Rotary. Many thanks. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We also have another donation, one hundred dollars to the early childhood program from Lori Canutson in honor of Bea Ricky. Again, I'm very thankful for donation into that program. And any discussion on that, questions? Not be looking for a motion to accept it? Motion to accept.
Second.
A motion by Director Trilio, second by Director Marcus to accept the donation of one hundred dollars to the early childhood program from Lori Canutson in honor of Bea Ricky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks. All right, moving forward, we have approved purchase of the two thousand twenty-two Uber seventy-seven passenger school bus. So pretend Chase, how long have you, have you explained this a little bit? Because I think you were part of it.
Yes. After the last board meeting where we talked about potentially purchasing a used bus from The River Falls, we did a little bit more checking around and had the opportunity to try out this Bluebird bus. It's a gas bus versus a diesel. It's brand new with a full warranty. As we looked at the the one from The River Falls, it had, you know, a similar motor to what we had in the other one. And it would come with no warranty and no guarantees of anything. And we were very concerned that we would run into the same problems with that one, that we would basically be buying more problems than we would get out of it. So Ryan and Jean tried out the new bus. We took it on routes, we took it out on activities. It's large enough to haul basically everybody, although we will probably have to use a trailer with some of the things that we've done. And the recommendation from both Ryan and Jean were to purchase the new bus versus the other one. They have money in the budget to do that, to make some capital purchases. We also got a quote from Hollands, which is another company that we do business with quite a bit. And theirs was about, it was about ten thousand more for a very similar. So and that we liked that this was gas versus diesel. It's, we find that on the routes, the gas buses tend to be better than the diesel ones. So all in all, this seemed like, this seemed like the better choice than buying a used vehicle that came from the warranties.
All of the warranty.
I'm not sure. I would have to ask that one.
Is that something, warranty work can be done in this region, or do we have to take it back down with them?
It can be done.
Questions, discussion? And we have the funds to pay for this?
We do.
When's the last time we purchased a new bus?
Last year.
Yeah.
Was that a US bill?
Yeah, well, it was a lease return. The last two years, we purchased lease return ones. They come with variable miles and and they come with warranties if they were new, so.
Those sometimes limited, those options, the lease returns?
Yeah, we've, we've tried to look at, you know, like some of those fifty-five passenger buses and things like that for routes. And we just, lease returns, you can't get that. And it's really hard. If we were, if we were to try and get a fifty-five passenger, even a new one, we wouldn't have it till May, so.
And this will probably be the activity bus then?
Most likely, yes, but we can take it on the road if we need to.
What's life expectancy with that gas versus diesel?
It's a little less, yeah.
Also compared to my other choice? Is it significant or?
It's, I'm trying to think. They told me what this one was getting. It wasn't, it wasn't wonderful.
Right.
I think the diesel do get, they do get better mileage.
Kind of make maintenance, yeah. Well, the cheaper fix, the gas is definitely.
Yeah.
Diesel's cost window effects.
Yeah, diesel's a more fun than the gas, so.
If that's your recommendation, any other questions? Looking for a motion to approve that or not approve? Motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Director Trilio, second by Director DePong to approve the purchase of two thousand twenty-two Bluebird seventy-seven passenger bus and that would be from North Central Bus Equipment. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Back to a some more.
Yes.
Verify that.
Ever.
You're good with, we have a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ah, let's see, so six point six, accept donation of two hundred and fifty dollars from Altima Bank toward FFA program. But thanks, many thanks. So yeah, more, Altima Bank has donated another two hundred and fifty dollars to the FFA program. And thinking for that, and motion to accept it. Sold.
Second.
A motion by Director Trilio, second by Director Marcus to approve there to accept the donation to two hundred and fifty dollars from Altima Bank toward the FFA program with thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Principal reports, elementary principal, Mr. Bushy.
Yes, item number one, you can look at enrollment, don't change from September to October. The one addition I did add are threes, are threes. And that's a part of my early childhood update, so I'll give you some numbers there and where we're at. That's our enrollment, up to date where we're at right now. Any questions on enrollment? October sixth, we hosted our parent-teacher conferences. This year, we did a virtual or phone conference, and we had ninety-four percent attendance. And that was for grades K through six. So again, very well attended. Obviously, we prefer in-person, but due to circumstance and where we're at that time, that was our best option for where we were at at that time. But again, a good response back from not only parents, but also from the staff in regards to our virtual or phone conferences. Any questions on parent-teacher conferences?
Are they, I mean, like you said, in-person is preferred, but how about from parent feedback? I mean, what are you hearing there? I mean, are they kind of a mixture of something like the phone calls and the virtual versus?
Ninety-eight percent of what I heard back was positive. I just had a couple of parents that would have preferred in-person. Those were calls or contacts I got to me. But other than that, I didn't hear any complaints other than there were two that said they would have preferred in-person.
So do you see that being kind of a combination thing maybe in the future?
I, you know, we'll have further discussion as a staff, but I think once we get to a point where there's a normalcy, that it, I mean, there's nothing better than being in person. And one thing that did help is for scheduling purposes. And for the most part, our teachers do a great job of trying to be back grade levels if there's multiple siblings. The time in a virtual or a phone conference is to the minute, which is good because there's no missed time. I mean, they have to get on to the next one. Though, I mean, complete the conversation, get to the next one where there's not that visiting really that goes on or in hallways. And we can get shortened at times because some can go long, but this really headless to a pretty strict schedule, so. Positive feedback.
Good.
Early childhood update, like I mentioned with the threes. Our threes had a open house on September seventeenth, and then we started class on September twenty-fourth. And right now, we have twenty-three-year-olds participating. We have nine in our AM, and this is being hosted this year at the elementary on Fridays. This is the first year in quite some time that we've had it at the elementary. And then in our afternoon session, we have elevens students, so that takes place on Fridays. Very positive feedback, especially being on campus at the elementary with the threes. Good feedback from the parents, but also the students. It's been a good environment to have those kids in our building, to get accustomed not only to the physical part of the building, but just being around the other students their age or close to their age, not around high school students, no offense down there.
What room are they using over there down?
Angie Dooster's room, because our fours are not in session on Fridays. Any questions on our threes? And those sessions run from the morning session, nine AM, to eleven afternoon session, twelve-thirty to two-thirty. Our ECFE, Earth the Five, started September twenty-first. And with that, we have two sessions on Tuesday. We have an AM session that runs nine AM to eleven, and then a PM session, five-thirty to seven-thirty. On Tuesday mornings, we have ten students, or ten kids. In the PM, we have fifteen. On Wednesdays is our second session, and that's an AM session from nine to eleven. There's fifteen children participating. And then we have a third session, that's on Thursday, and that's nine AM to eleven AM, and that's six students. And then we have a third session, that's on Thursday, and that's 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and that's six students. So all in all, was everything up and running and the way it's formatted this year, nothing but positive happenings coming from our early childhood. And I talked to Lynette and she will be here in January to give specific information in regards to that early childhood and kind of what the trend is, is our trajectory going in what direction and be able to talk about the program that she has in place.
Where does that help?
This ECFE is here at the high school.
Yeah, okay. Is it that in the home that room?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. So they use one, one of the rooms for the children and then the other room is the parent educator room.
Sure.
Any questions there? And I just have some important dates coming up. Obviously, we have MEA October 21st and 22nd. October 26th, I'll be attending the school law conference in Menomon. November 5th, we're already at the end of the first quarter, just around the corner, so. And then November 8th through the 19th, we're going to start our second round of benchmarks for STAR 360. One date I should have added here, we have October 27th, that's our data review night. And that's where we'll be going over some of that STAR 360 assessments for, and our APs for pre-k through second grade. And then we'll be analyzing MCA data, grades three through six. Mr. Crumple, we'll probably have something in regards to that for the high school too. Give us his report. Last thing I have there are the students of the month for September. And I don't want to forget this, but sponsoring our students of the month. And they have for many years as Dairy Queen. They provide each student of the month with a free small Blizzard coupon. And then the Boston Theater has like a one admission, pre-admission for all of our students per student of the month. So our students listed there in kindergarten, we have Brad Maraska and Aaron Howard. First grade Eleanor Anderson and Ila Johnson. Second grade Rosie Clinkey and Aralyn Schneider. Third grade Grace Tyken and Victor Rojas. Fourth grade Gunnar Holkert and Zach Ballman. Fifth grade Jenna Garrison and Caden Woolheeder. And in sixth grade, Lexi Elyes and Maya's Maya Roblo. Any questions? I'm sorry, I have to step out. We, we just got notification, we have a bus out tomorrow, so I have to go take care of some notifications.
Thanks, well, thanks. Okay, so moving on, principal, high school principals, Principal Crumple.
All right. Again, we had our student-led conferences on October 6th from 1:00 to 7:00 PM. Student-led conferences at the high school, we do a little preparatory work. So each student, the most we had, I believe, was 17. Some of our advisors had 17 students, the majority had about 14. The fewest were some, one, one or two staff had eight. But they worked with the students prior to the conference night to develop a goal sheet, what they, what they thought were strengths and weaknesses of the student. And then they talked with their parents to their goal sheet. They went over their grades and pieces like that. The student actually, again, leads and takes care of the conference. And that night, we had the option of virtual or face-to-face, whichever worked best for our families. We also had some other events going on that brought in parents. We had a pretty good turnout for financial aid. We had a financial aid meeting in the media center here. Someone from BSU came over and helped go fill out the FASL form. And then we also had our National Honor Society induction then. As far as conference numbers, on our initial first conferences of students that participated virtually or in the building, we had 71% attendance, which isn't too bad for high school conferences. Typically, elementary conferences are in that 90 percentile range, but high school ones are a little bit lower. But we also, again, because it was student-led conferences, if the kids took home their information, kind of did a little precursor with their, with their advisor and then went home and delivered the conference at home, that wasn't counted, so it's closer to probably about 80, 85% of conference attendance because the kids did take their information home and shared with their parents. Any questions on student-led conferences?
Pretty cool, but we were averaging what, right around an 80 for those, was that?
Somewhere in there. I know my first year, we did a really, a good publicity. We sent postcards and did student-led conferences and we had everything scheduled and, and we had about 90%. And, and that was 2019, in the fall of 2019. Last year, we had our virtual ones and, and it seemed to go, we had a little bit, a little bit better attendance somewhere in there. But it wasn't, overall, like I said, it wasn't too bad because the end is sitting down with your parent and having a conversation about what other, what my goals are in school and how I'm doing academically. And then having, each one was set for about 10 minutes and we had openings, so it's.
I think it's impressive, student-led conferences, year over year, just with my kids as far as how much more detail year after year, the confidence speaking to, to those goals. So I appreciate those student-led conferences.
I typically at the high school there were our highest, highest turnout. Any other questions? Next item two, our end of our first quarter, like Principal Bushy said, is coming up, November 5th. Record, report cards will be available online on the 15th, but they are printed at the office if the parents request. If someone doesn't have digital means, they just check. They can call the office, it will print them out a copy and get it for them. Any questions on end of quarter? Item number three, I just wanted to give a little quarantine learning update because we're always kind of taking a look at our process. And over, since school began, and I had to update at this afternoon, but we've had 100 students at the high school in quarantine learning. So those are students that have been in close contact in the, in the building or at home and had to spend some time away from our building. This year, quarantine learning looks a little bit different. We are not live streaming instruction because when we talked with students and families and parents, internet was a big issue. And if it was a glitchy feed, things would cut out and kids couldn't get the instruction that they needed. We, we decided to push out instructional videos to support the kids along with their assignments. So the kids have access to their Google Classroom. And there's a staff member from the school that checks in with them daily. Sometimes it's an email, sometimes it's a, a virtual Google Meet. So we can go through homework assignments with the kids and say, hey, what are you struggling on? What do you need to, show me this assignment, have you given these things in? That type of thing. So we have six staff, six plus staff actually, assigned to working with these kids and making those connections daily. When the students, when I've gotten feedback from all the students, when they come back in the building, they say the biggest thing is those reach outs and those daily connects are really helpful along with the instructional videos. The students are very honest with me and say, you know what, Mr. Crumple, sometimes I miss my meeting and that's on me, you know? So I said, how are, how are you assignment-wise? And typically, when they get back in the building, some of them will have an assignment or two that they need to get caught up on. Our average amount of time for those 100 students that were out is five days or less. So it is not a significant portion. We have been pretty fortunate with that, but any time out of the building, we're always concerned about. So we want to make those connections daily with those kids and make sure they're keeping up with our work. Currently, we're not testing or doing any quizzes outside the building. Again, we want to take that burden off our parents and families. Kids will take those tests when they get, get back. So of those 100 students, there were six students that had a little bit of a drop in their grades and performance due to quarantine. And I would say that looking at their scores and their, their pieces, it's because they haven't made up their tests yet. So they're getting a little bit of time when they get back to, to get their work turned in and then take their, take their assessments when they're prepared and ready. Any questions about our quarantine learning?
So we meet the students needs, I mean, while they're in quarantine, we're providing assistance for them when they come back to bring them up to speed. So I mean, we're taking care of what's needed there.
Yep, and the other, the other piece with that too is we do have our tutoring sessions before and after school that we've made a virtual link, so the kids can come from 7:00 to 8:00 and get an hour of, of one on, or work with a tutor. And then from 3:15 to 4:15 after school too, if they need to get those pieces. Along with those daily check-ins, so those people that need a little bit more. And we're working with Holly Lennis, who's our success coach. LeAnn Schuchman, who's a para educator, who's positioned to approve for, for this purpose. Ellen Ramsdru, Angie Bushy, our Indian Ed Director. Ellen's our school social worker, excuse me, Ellen Bullock, she got married this summer. And Rebecca Hansen, our counselor, our special education staff. If any kids are on an IEP or working out or reaching with them, along with our parents and, and myself.
And then how much staff and everything, I mean, there's this, it can't be a burden like it was last year, but it's still asking some.
I will say that in our, in our efforts to improve, I have to just be honest, we, we, we went from six to 65 in a, in a pretty big explosion. And during that time, of the six staff members that were assigned to work with kids, three were out dealing with health issues or, or their own or, or family members too. So, so some of our connections for that first initial wave there didn't, didn't get made. So we looked at how we can improve those things and, and what we need to do. And we spread it out a little bit more too and had backups to our backups. And there was, there was a time there where it's kind of going through where, and I could say that, you know, I dusted out my teaching certificate, stepped in the classrooms and, and filled in and our, and we were tight. We don't have a lot of stuff still, especially our, our para educators. We're looking for that position, to get that, you know, position over the high school to get filled in. Can't find that and can't find some, so if you know people, keep hitting them up for that piece. But I think we're, we've stabilized currently. Today, we just had a slight, slight uptick, but the, the majority of the students will be out for one day because of the ways that everything fell. But we do have 12 students on our, on our quarantine learning plan. And on Monday, that number will be reduced to probably two.
Well, I know it's been challenging. I mean, I don't think we expected that we could begin with this, but I think it's going to everybody, this, you know, staff, everybody for the hard work put in and the flexibility to be able to adjust, so.
I have to give a big thank you to Nikki Prudhomme and Denise Stanky for, for working with this stuff. These calls to parents aren't always easy. And as board members, if you get feedback and there's areas for us to improve, please, please let us know. But we haven't changed our policies. We've, we've been pretty open and, we've been very open and transparent as to what. There's three things that'll keep someone from being in close contact, vaccination, wearing a mask properly in school or having contracted the positive COVID test in the last 90 days. So those things will keep those people in the building, provided they're not symptomatic. But we also reduced our length of quarantine from 14 to 10, which I think has been working pretty well. And we also switched from, before last year, it was six feet, now it's within three, three feet or less for a period of 15 minutes or more. So just that understanding for parents. And it's never easy when your child has to, to miss some time or a special event or activity, things like that. But just beware and if we can help, oh, again, but sometimes Denise and Nikki get the breath of someone who's frustrated.
Well, just so you know, y'all have board support, so.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding quarantine learning?
When does that 10-day period start? At the time of the symptom or the test or the exposure?
And it vary, it, it does vary upon case. If, if a student is symptomatic prior to testing positive, then it would be from onset of symptom date. The other thing to remember is there's something called zero date. Last, last day of exposure is a zero, so you count one from the next day on. So that, that's sometimes a little bit tricky on some of those pieces. But what we, what we've seen and looking at it, like donations from the Department of Health and CDC, that pieces, that most of the cases are, we ask that students that have been exposed, you especially look out, on the lookout five days after last day of exposure and go test then. And we do have an option for, for students, if they come back with a lab confirmed negative test, on day seven, they could return to the building, provided they do have a negative lab confirmed test. So that'll, there's, there's a little variation and fluctuation and we go through.
And how often is the COVID committee meeting, so once a month?
At least once a month. We, we've been meeting more, like two, every two weeks for the last month.
Item number four, there is no school coming up for, in November on those dates. And like Principal Bushy said, we do have on the 27th, it is partially labor students and staff will be going over some district data on that day. That was supposed to be my law conference in, in Menomon on that day, but through presenting some of that stuff, I think I'll either be taking back, you know, Principal Bushy on the 26th to get that principal law piece up to date, but we're working that out. Next item up is our enrollment. There is a, a little bit of a, a slight, you can see there's a little decrease from September to October. And some of that is, we had some students that were enrolled in the beginning of the year that had moved and we, we got some transfers, files, transfer requests in, so we updated that. We do have one student on there.
I'm not going to go through my whole report because you can read it and a lot of it I've already told you in the, in our weekly updates, but I do want to draw your attention to the very first one. We have been in contact with Aptig. They are a company that, they update websites, create websites, create mobile apps for, for schools, specifically schools. And they create mobile apps that would allow us to manage our social media and all kinds of things from one site. And we've, we've had several meetings with them. And then we met with our, our technology committee and just talked it through. And they, they were on board with, with this because our, our website is cluttered and it looks old and out of date and it's a little hard to maintain. And we started doing a cost analysis and we're going to end up, annual costs after this initial, after the initial buildup, annual costs will be less than we are currently paying for social media and, and then managing our website. The other nice piece about this is it will also manage those contacts with families. So the school messenger, right now, if I want, if I want something to go out, I have to, we have to get it on the website, so I have to go through Steve, our technology guy. And then I have to do the, go back to my computer and do the instant messenger. And then I have to also send something to social media to get, to get things out. So we're going to three and four, sometimes five different places to get information out to families. This is going to streamline it, so it's just one. So the link on here, you can, there's a video that they provided that you can, you're welcome to look at or I can send it out tomorrow to you as well. Bagley uses Aptig to manage their website, several others in our area. I think Wobin also does and a few others have, have joined on there. It's a slick streamlined website that's user-friendly. Some of the training that I had this summer in terms of growing enrollment emphasized the importance of having a, a really up-to-date vibrant website and a place where prospective students and families can click and get information. And the other cool thing is, most people are living on the phone these days. And this will create, we will create, if you create a mobile app through something called Thrill Share that our families can download and then everything's right there. And when they go on the mobile app, it's not going to take them to the website like a lot of mobile apps do, so that you have to actually click and try and navigate the website. It's going to be streamlined, so that if you want to know what your kid's having for lunch today, you can click on the lunch piece and it'll just bring up today's lunch menu. And, oh, games and things like that. And parents can decide, families can decide how much notification they. And parents can decide, families can decide how much notification they, how many times they want their phone to ding at them during the day. And it just seemed like a really good way to manage everything and have it all in one spot. So we are going to make that switch. And we will be handling our social media in-house for a while while that switch is happening. And so we might have, you know, our Facebook might not be as pretty as it is right now until we get the website up and running. But they said they could switch over the family notifications. We can have that up and running one day. So we're excited to get this going and have something that's going to be vibrant and fresh and less expensive.
Yeah. So what's the role and schedule for the changeover?
Sixty to ninety days max.
And they offer support with?
Lots. Lots, yeah. We will have a person assigned to us and that person will be with us until we don't have the contract with them anymore.
And what's the upfront cost?
The upfront cost is seven thousand five hundred. And it's in our technology budget already because we've spent grant money on computers. So we're, you know, and we get, it was going to be ninety, nine thousand five hundred, but by agreeing to it now, we got a discount. So we jumped on it and I'm really excited that we're going to have something. And they promised as part of it, we get a website upgrade every year. So instead of us kind of clunking away at putting things in, they're going to help us manage that every year. It's something that's refreshed, so. So there's that. And then I'm going up to Gully on Thursday of next week for a listening session. And skipping down, we do have some testing capabilities now for COVID. We will be getting our, we have the Zoom-enabled Vault test kits from last year. We can use those. We're getting some new mailers for those, so we can send those home with kids or with staff, so that they don't necessarily have to go into the clinic. That is a lab confirmed positive or lab confirmed negative with those. And then we also got some of the over the counter ones from state free. Those are for students only. They can use more for screening. We can't accept them to get them back into school on those, but it can be a screening tool and we would send those home if parents want them. And so that's kind of our next step with COVID. And then we are also getting some additional monies this year from the state. They are allocating some of their American Rescue Plan dollars to, for schools that lost enrollment due to the pandemic. And we did, we'll be getting thirty thousand, a little over thirty thousand. It has to be new spending. It can't be, I can't, we can't use it just to do something we've already, we're already doing. And in talking with the principals, we think that this one needs probably to be allocated to mental health for our students and staff. So we'll be working on that. We don't anticipate those funds being available till November, end of November. So we'll have some time to develop what we think is the right thing, right way to spend this. And that's as far as we're going to go because you guys have seen all of those things. Unless you have questions about something on my list.
For the Vault testing, what does that entail? Do they need to have a Zoom with a nurse or is it somebody with Vault or is it some, anybody?
It's someone with Vault.
Okay.
And so they set up a Vault account and then they go through the process that it's just a separate just sped out to.
We did the testing at like an actual clinic setup and I wasn't sure what it entailed to do it at home. So people will need access to the internet.
I think that's the same, all the state employees are.
I've done the Vault one, be at home and you do have to have internet. You got to a live feed with someone from their lab and they watch you complete the test, seal it up, and then walk you through it and then ship it off in the mail. Students will have their school computer. Parents will be responsible for at-home internet use. And last go around, I think there was only two families that apparently didn't have adequate internet at their house.
And you can.
Or six hundred and forty.
You can use your phone too to complete it as long as you have a video key.
Any other questions? Then we will move on and personnel. So also seven-one will be approved or not approved to support staff handbook, the salary schedule, individual contracts for salaried staff. We see by the enclosure, you know, the negotiation committee has been meeting the last couple, about a month and a half. And Director Trilio, why don't I let you speak with the negotiations?
Sure.
So what we did, what we did was we had a sit-down session with the various groups and individuals, gathered information and then set up another meeting within the committee to assess the information and decide what was best for everybody involved. And put together a really comprehensive, well-thought-out document here. So given all this put into it and all the thought and all the information, I highly recommend that it be approved. It's a very well thought over piece. Questions? I mean, I know three of us were involved in the negotiation process of it, but.
This isn't necessarily pertaining to just this, but what is the situation for people that have to be out of work due to COVID, like as far as pay is concerned?
Super Tenny Chase, what you know?
We, it depends on their situation. Some can work from home and if they can work from home and are healthy enough to do that, then there is no deduction in pay and there's no use of their leave. If they can't work from home, then they can use their district leave that they have. The COVID leave that was available previously was a federal mandate and that's no longer available. So staff can use their sick leave or personal leave too.
Other questions or concerns or? So we're looking for a motion to approve the support staff handbook and salary schedule and individual contracts for salaried staff. So second, I have a motion by Director Trilio, second by Director Christian to approve the support staff handbook and salary schedule and individual contracts for salaried staff. Any other discussion, any discussions, excuse me? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point two, the job description for the assistant to the athletic director. This is a new position that was, when we sat down with the individuals, Ryan brought this up as something that he was requesting some help with. And I don't know, if you have anything to add there?
Essentially, what he said is with the work he has to do in the building to try and also line stuff up on the phone, it's just really hard to get meetings put together and things. So he requested someone who was able to communicate with others when he can't be doing it and kind of assist him with getting things set up and kind of helping him share the load on some of the, some of the lining things up and stuff, so.
As you can see, I mean, they're looking at five hours per average per week and it's a stagnant position. For the school here. Questions? I'd be looking for a motion to either approve or not approve the job description.
Motion to approve.
Second, a motion by Director Trilio, second by Director DePong to approve the job description for the assistant to the athletic director. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so then next we have the accounting, let's see, the title of her, currently that would be Jones. Position and one of the things too, because of the work, the duties that she does, it's lost forever here with, I don't catch it. You know, we looked at it and changing the title of that position to a business manager is probably the way to go with it because it's, she is more of a business manager than just an accounting technician.
Director Trilio, Director DePong.
And one thing too that she said, what would help is like quite often she gets calls to her particular office. They're looking, they speak to the business manager. And essentially that's who she is, but you know, it makes it a lot simpler if she has that title.
And it's a revised job description. She brought us a list of things that, you know, she was actually doing and we didn't have the individual job description.
So basically some update.
So we have a motion to approve or not approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Director Christian, supported by Director Marcus to approve the change in title for the accounting technician position to business manager along with revised job description. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the other one is approve the updated job description for activities director slash transportation coordinator. Here again, I think we added a couple of things, but the other side was just to bring it more in line. And I think the other thing is we kind of made sure that they're separate duties for the positions. So that's combined two positions by one person, correct?
Yes.
Anybody have anything they had? I think the only change that came in there really was, what did we add to it? I lost my page.
Legally. I know in all equations, okay. On the transportation coordinator position.
And it was, the main thing that we added was the must be able to legally drive a school bus in Minnesota. And then if you look down, under primary duties, we talk about in emergency situations only may be called upon to drive a bus. Emergency situation is determined by school administration working with transportation coordinator. Ryan expressed some concerns about, you know, how difficult it would be to be doing transportation coordinator activities director duties if he were called to drive full-time. And we don't want to make that a habit for him to be driving full-time. But there may be a time when there's, a bus gets stuck and we have to take another bus out to pick those kids up so we can get them home. Or there's a bus accident and we need to send a bus out, you know, and we need somebody right now, right here to get that bus out there. Or maybe we need to take a bus up to Kirkston to get fixed. Or you know, just some of those kinds of things where, where him having a license would be beneficial.
Yeah, I agree. Even understanding what the process is going through it and what to keep it on, you know, keep up the pre-checks and things like that, I think it's important as well. Have that language in there.
So essentially, this is the, I guess you might see the finishing of what we started last year. You know, we put together the transportation coordinator piece, but at the time, there's that understanding that as we further into it, we're going to look, assess it more and then, you know, streamline, you know, get things set. Okay, here's minimum requirements, here's what we expect, here's, and so we're doing that now. Essentially, it's what we're doing, finishing up what we started earlier.
Any other discussion? Looking for a motion to approve or not approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
So I've got a motion by Director Trilio, second by Director Christian to approve the updated job description for activities director slash transportation coordinator. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point five, Director Munter, Brandy, just because of job duties, she's been really busy. Postal Service is struggling for help and she's working on enrollment and places like that. And she was trying to make meetings where she could, you know, she was, when she could come in virtual, it helped a little bit, but overall, it's just gotten to be too big of a struggle for her and she just feels her job demands are not going to change and feels it would be better for her to resign from the board. I think, you know, Brandy brought a lot of good things to this board. Banker for everything she did. I mean, I look at it, just the bus tracking, you know, those are ideas that just came from the outside that she brought in. She'll be missed from the board even, you know, and I realize she wasn't here all the time, but her position on things and her contacts and understanding, it's something the board will miss. Any other comments or discussion?
I just agree that yes, she was a valuable member, he is a valuable member. You know, she brought a lot of good with her, but I fully understand her situation too where, you know, where you try and make it, you can't and you're like, okay, maybe I should just step aside and let someone else do what I cannot do. So that's fully understood, but again, a thanks to her for all she's done. Because she did, and she would know a lot of things.
So if any other discussion or if not, we're looking for a motion to accept the resignation or not.
I'm going to accept the resignation of Director Munter. Second.
We have a motion by Director DePong, second by Director Trilio to accept the resignation of Board Director Brandy Munter from a position on the board with thanks for years of service. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So seven point six is just a discussion point, trying to stay kind of brief with it, but is, what are we looking at, you know, in the past when we've had a director retire, resign or move out of the area, filling that position? We do not have to do an election in November with it because of the timing of it. She has one year left, correct, on the position, on her term. So we would, you know, before in the past, we have put out notice that we're looking for somebody that'd be interested in filling the position. Done some interviews on it and filled in that way. I mean, we have the option of leaving that position, vacant until the November election of next year, twenty twenty-two. And, you know, so they'd be elected for a full year, full four-year term. I mean, we're just trying to get an idea of what the board's thinking. Super Tenny Chase, I don't know if you have anything you might add or?
Technically, this doesn't fall under one of those areas where we could leave it vacant. I did a little more research on that because there's not an illness or a leave of absence is what the statute, how the statute reads. So we do have to fill it, but how we do it is determined by the board. Another thing that, another option that can be done is because of the training and the short time that's available, the board can also ask a former board member to serve again if that's a direction we'd like to go. So there, those of you that are new understand how much training has to happen and has to happen quickly.
Well, we have to fill it, we have to fill it.
We do, yeah.
So I guess we'd probably go back to the whole process that, I mean.
I'd probably be more in favor of opening it up to the application process. Again, going through the interviews, appointing someone.
We'd be looking probably.
Yeah, we know they're interested in. The position and then it gives them a little bit of a taste of whether they'll be roughly a year left of that term prior to.
Yeah, because it would take two more spaces to get a room.
That's my thought.
Yeah, I agree. I think it gives somebody the opportunity to, to, to see what it's like without going into a four-year term. We might get more people interested that way, you know, and then maybe have somebody that's then interested for a term after that.
Well, I think, you know, as a discussion point, I think what we're hearing out of this is leaning that we would open it up for the application process. I think if you have different opinions on that or whatever, reach out to Superintendent Chase and we can expect that process when we're comfortable with it.
I think, would the board be comfortable with having someone ready to seat as of January? We have to give, after we, after the board selects someone, we have to give a thirty days notice period before we can actually seat them. So that was.
That's sooner, yeah, that'd be, I think that'd be really good.
Save us a little more time that she's sort of on the board, your view for it, so.
Well, we got a direction. Yeah, at that.
Yes, hello, my name's Tenny Chase, good evening.
Thank you for being so patient.
Of course, I'm glad there. Okay, so I just want to first off, make a little addendum to what I had sent out and then I believe you all had received it also in your board packet. Due to past experience, it was present your information, then you got an answer and then I was informed that that's not necessarily the proper protocol that, as it was written in the, in the book, this special book. So we're going to go with this informative presentation tonight on perspective, Spain trip or Puerto Rico. And that is new. The last time I. The last time I had taken the initial baby steps, when I had heard that the baseball team was permitted to go to Flori, will be permitted to go to Florida in the spring, that gave me hope in asking and doing my due diligence on behalf of the students here for them to also have an opportunity where they are to study abroad. The reason why I personally believe so strongly in this brief portion of a study abroad experience is because I myself went as a junior in high school, at Fagley High School, for 10 days with four other girls and my Spanish teacher. And I strongly believe that it was because of that trip which inspired me to continue my Spanish education to become the Spanish teacher you see before you today. So initially, I needed to find out if there was any interest in a trip, in the community wanting a trip due to the current status of COVID and other issues. Okay, so then Dominic gave me approval to send out. At that time, it was just three Spain options. I had never thought to add a more domestic approach until after we talked about COVID and the restrictions or the issues that may arise with that. So I had received 22 responses. I can't really, I think I sent out probably 35 had gone home to the students. I received 22, you can look at whose names. There are two on there that did not return theirs, but one was Tommy Simonson and Toni Carleen, which you can see that, where they didn't have their parents sign up on that. And this was simply for interest that a Spain trip would occur. I had given them three options, insider Spain, Madrid, Barcelona, and then another Spain option. And then they could choose which option they preferred. And a lot of it's, or some were like just any, that the trip that, that there would be a trip offered. So that was really nice. Before, those of you who had served on the board before, we had a very successful and productive trip to Spain in 2019. It was very fortunate the timing that we had gone, because we were able to get back. We were able to go on our trip, get back, and then the COVID erupted. And all other trips that were planned from January on through were canceled. And those students that had fundraised and made money were not allowed to go on their trip. Of course, they were refunded due to their travel protection plans, which those companies did do have those. And that's stated also in your package as well as here. Or they would supplement and substitute another trip at a different time. So the latest is, I would like to be given consideration for a Spain or Puerto Rico trip to take place while school is in session, the weeks of November 21st to the 28th. Protection plan. Could on the trip, say Spain or Puerto Rico, they strongly suggest them all purchasing the double insurance. Okay, so then they can't be angry with you, it's their own liability. It frees you up quite significantly. Then, the reason for this trip to occur during the school year has its benefits, such as lower cost to the student and family since it's in the off season. Students who are in their senior year and are 18 have to adhere to the school rules, school rules. If taken in summer after graduation, the school cannot hold them accountable. The reason for the early request is to see if there's enough interest for the trip to occur if approved, which allows the student and the family time to raise funds and get on the payment plan. Each student, family that decides to sign up if it is approved, they instantly have their own, they have to sign up individually. Okay, so it's not a group effort for them that they, it's individual basis, okay? Initially, I need at least six people to secure my place as the leader for them to go, for it to happen after approval. And they all make their own money. Of course, if the families want to get together and have fundraising opportunities, more power to them. But I don't coordinate anything. I don't keep track of all of that because their payments go directly into their own accounts. So I am not handling any funding, it's all them and their family. The educational tour company that I have chosen is Explorca. They have given me the best rate for the students compared to EF Tours and ACIS. I've never traveled with ACIS. I really looked into, they are a wonderful company. However, just in cost comparison, I didn't even put those options forth. I have, in the past, also traveled with EF. I had no issues with EF. Here again, Explorca actually used to be a part of EF and then broke apart. And our giving, they were very competitive. And my goal is to get the best trip for the least amount of money with all the bells and whistles and all the safety and security that these educational tour companies offer. As I mentioned, I have taken a total of three successful student trips to Spain during my time at BHS. They were all during the school year. One was in January of 2007, October of 2011, and then early November of 2014. Boston High School approved a Spain trip that consisted of 24 students and three other chaperones to Spain in 2019. And those are two little small Spain books. If you remember, I hope that you had all gotten your thank you cards after we came back and for personal comments on how the trip benefited and impacted their lives substantially. It is a trip that they will never forget. They were already saying, because we went to La Sagrada Familia, the Holy Family Church in Barcelona, which is still not finished. But the whole consensus was it's supposed to be finished in 2026. And Antonio Gaudí designed it, the architect. And they're following in his design. They're like, so we need to come back and see the finished product, of course. So that's the potential plan is in 2026 with that. Then, Explorca Tour Company is very similar to EF, where it has its own travel insurance and it's all-inclusive, as well as allows a chaperone for every six paid participants. I really like the idea of the whole six. The tour company did mention to me, if you want to lower the cost per student, you could say, lower the chaperone, allow eight students per, which is still really awesome. Eight students to a chaperone. But I really like the six because you really have that, that smaller group, that more one-on-one, the mother hen and her chicks. I would rather have that. And, because that is just at a better cost effective there and safety measures to have that adult with six or some adult with eight. That make sense? Okay, so I have them leave the price alone with the per six. The reason for the two itineraries is because one is international and the other is domestic. This is to ensure a trip opportunity regardless of the COVID restrictions. Puerto Rico is a territory of the US. So the benefit to that is there aren't as many restrictions leaving and entering the country. You don't even need a passport. You don't even need a test upon entering. The masks are required. I'll get to more questions if you hand them up about entering with Puerto Rico. The dollar is the same. And I had also studied in Puerto Rico, so I'm familiar with Puerto Rico. Of course, that was before, that was in 2001, before the hurricane. But Stacy Hossler has gone there. And with her family, I was there on an ecological during my bachelor's of science study with Spanish there for a month. And it does, Puerto Rico does have a hurricane season, which I'm requesting during the November Thanksgiving time. It's hurricane season runs from June to November, but if hurricanes are to occur, they're main, they're between September and October, that's their history of when they happen. So we're really, we would be at the end of November, so I don't have a crystal ball, but it would be least likely that there would be a hurricane during that time. The weather is in the seventies to the eighties. It is the rainier season, but it's like it rains and then it, it lightens and you can go about enjoying your Caribbean day. As for the projected cost of the district, I would love the district to provide bus transportation. I'm really happy that you are getting a new school bus, because my God, the school bus that picked us up when we returned on December 2nd had no heat. And it was really cold. And so yay, thank you for getting a new bus. And hopefully the heat works on it.
You're not going to use it though.
Well, an activity bus. So to provide bus transportation to Fargo. And that is another thing also, I have the price drawn up flying to and from Fargo. So you're, you don't have to travel as far via bus and it's just better. And it's a smaller airport to navigate. I navigated it three times through Minneapolis with 36 kids. And it was fine, I can do that. But it's a lot simpler when you have a smaller airport to navigate with students. And then, and that would be two times drop off and pickup. And then also for the district to pay for my sub while I am working with the students on their study abroad. And then, as you can see, number of students to chaperones, the student expectations. And this is another reason why it's a year prior. So it's a extensive motivator for the students. If they have been, have successfully completed Spanish II and are enrolled in Spanish III or want to be enrolled in Spanish III but can't take Spanish III, that's not, my main goal is for them to have at least successfully passed Spanish II because I don't want them to pass up another, because Spanish III sometimes conflicts with another class. And they deserve, they've put in two years. If, and that they've successfully done it and they would like to go, I want that open to them. And as you can see, and so that they don't have three or more referrals to the office, which is a, receive an F and I or an N, be on the truancy tracker program, or have had attendance issues, not to be involved in any chemical dependency issues. Students with ASD or failing grades will not be allowed to participate. So this is all something that gives them and their families a heads up on, these are your guidelines for you, because if you, if that happens, then, and they don't abide by this contract and then they all do sign it as well, then they have to deal with getting their money back themselves. And that's not on the district, that's on their own students' responsibility. And then, of course, the participation grade policy and alcohol, tobacco, and our drugs there. Now, my preference for the trip to be approved is Spain, however, but since, or I hope Puerto Rico could be a likely, because Puerto Rico could be achieved on an individual basis due simply to proximity. But if COVID and other international aspects are a concern, we can then have a Puerto Rico trip as an option. Since it's domestic, it's less money for the students to raise in one year. Previously, I would get approval for a trip. This is the school board packet that was sent to me from Explorca. That further explains the insurance, the way the trip is outlined, that type of thing. And then here is Stacy's verbal speech. I wanted to give you a copy of that since it's something to refer to when you're thinking about. Does it have an option? Any questions for me?
I appreciate the extra work that you put into and the desire for, you know, giving our students opportunities to, or additional experiences. That's, that's what makes me happy, is the extra work that you're putting in. I like to enable additional experiences and not limit them too. So, and especially when you've done this in the past too, you've got some history in making it work as well.
It's my pleasure. When you were talking earlier, Dominic, about COVID and the students in their quarantine and how we address them. For myself, I was on COVID quarantine, okay? And I knew that a sub would not be able to teach my students. And I was not on my deathbed. I, for me, it felt like I just had a cold. So I talked to Dominic and I said, you'll need a sub for me because I can't be in the building. However, I want to teach all of my students from my classroom because I don't want them to be missing out on a week's worth of work and learning. And because I know I could have made up all these subplans, but a non-Spanish emphasis person is not going to be able to get the material across to my students. And my students mean a lot to me. So they all, it was awesome. We had, what was it called, Maggie May?
Or you?
Yeah. And I got to see him, so I was like on the TV and I got to teach them. And we learned that week because I didn't want them to lose any of that precious week of learning time. And this is a very educational trip that can reward them for the hard work that they have put in, in learning the language, as well as expand their knowledge as well.
So these prices, according to the itineraries that you included, they're good or locked in or whatever?
Yes, oh, I'm glad, I'm glad you asked me that. I have this locked.
Twenty twenty-one?
Yes, I have this locked in for November 30th. Okay, so.
One says December 20th and the other.
Right, because I just got the Puerto Rico one. I just, so that one will be good through December. But like, she knows, like the Explorca lady, Haley Semillion, have, because I had been asking about Spain, so she's like, I can lock in Spain for November. And you'll notice too, the only, the Spain trip only offers the $200 discount because they only do that for international, whereas Puerto Rico is a domestic. So that's why there isn't a $200 discount for that one. But yes, the prices are locked in, because I said, upon school board approval. And in my letter to the parents for their interest, I said, I will let them know as soon as I get back responses and school board and administration approval, then we have a meeting and then you take the next step. When I told the students that I had also offered Puerto Rico, because initially Puerto Rico was not an option for the students, they were like, well, now my mom would like that. My parents would like that, because perhaps those parents were more afraid of the international, whereas Puerto Rico is domestic. So there might even be more interest than the 24. But I can just have that at that time. Huh?
How many total students in your class?
Well, just of those interested was 24.
Okay, so you brought up an interesting point there with Puerto Rico option where some parents were more on board towards it.
Yeah.
Would you lose them if it was Spain?
No, because these are the 24 right now. This was other people who did not, did not return one of these. These were other students that were like, well.
Could possibly gain more by going to Puerto Rico. Okay.
And it's also a lot, it's like $1,000 less, right?
$1,100.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to figure out the balance there. And I don't want to see somebody miss out on the trip because hardship.
Right.
Okay, so then, you know, we've got two options here and I understand where you're going with, you know, I mean, the COVID thing is kind of, well, we're there, that's going to be Puerto Rico, November. Like you said, you're at the end of the hurricane season, but all it takes is one early November and Puerto Rico might not be an accessible place at that.
Correct. But then, of course, if that happens, they have their insurance. So then what they do initially, okay, so say, due to a natural disaster. Then they're like, okay, what time can we do this? Is there another location that we can send you to? They, they do all that handling and jostling. And then that is just applied then and/or you get your money back 75% because it's all been insured.
So you're kind of asking the board to choose which location we go to?
I'm asking for your guidance. I would like there to be an opportunity for them. And so I'm asking if you prefer, and prefer Spain for the, the students to go on, I'm, I'm great with that. If you prefer Puerto Rico, I'm also great with that. It's just for there to be an opportunity, as Stacy mentioned. COVID has taken away so much from everybody that, um, to discount it, I, I agree with her, would be a bit premature. Let us give them some hope and something to work forward to, look forward to and work towards. And then if things change, because life, oh, you, um, curveballs, then we go from there.
Do you think that one opportunity is better than the other?
Like I mentioned, I'm, I will just be honest and say I'm a Spain snob simply because it's where Spanish originated from. It's also European. And the only reason why I have not, where Puerto Rico was, had not been my first choice before was because of the close proximity. People could afford their family, currently people go there during different breaks, to Puerto Rico or Mexico or Cancun, you know, that type of thing. So it's something that families here in the Midwest can achieve usually on their own. Whereas the international aspect of a trip is less likely achieved by a family simply because you're not getting that amazing group rate of traveling as a group and going there. The, the days in, in Puerto Rico, you are getting six days with the extension. I added this, the six days, and you're there in Puerto Rico all six days. Whereas the international trip, you have a day of flight there and a day of flight home. So you're only actually five days in Spain where the two bookends are flying to and departure. I love Puerto Rico. I was there for a month. It was gorgeous. I love Spain. It's beautiful. People are wonderful. Both places have safe water and food, amazing food. So, um, very safe in either location.
I'm really wondering the others, not where I'm going there at with this. But if, you know, exposure and learning is what we're trying to create, especially a COVID environment, it kind of makes me lean towards Puerto Rico to the fact that we could maybe expose more students to this.
Right, yes. So, but I mean, due to, due to the cost and alone is, is definitely more appealing. Very much so. And they're still getting the link, the, the learning and all of the national aspects of it as well.
Do you, is there any way to get an idea of how many additional students would come up with that?
Well, initially when I, we had gone to Spain the last time. Okay, because I always like to err on the side of caution because I would like to be pleasantly surprised rather than disappointed. So, and because the tour companies ask you, what size of group are you looking at? And so when I initially spoke to EF, I said, okay, well, I had, because it's really easy to sign a newspaper without putting any money down, right? Hey, so when initially I got 30-some back the last time in 2019, I was like, okay, 15, 18 max. I always like cut it the number in half just because then I'd rather be pleasantly surprised and disappointed. But now since the trip, if, if you so suggest to go to Puerto Rico, I could see at least 18 to 24 going, if I had 24 go to Spain in 2019. So that was 24 students, juniors and seniors. And then I had three additional chaperones.
And initially when I talked to Marri, she's been very accommodating. We've been working through the process. The reason, the reason we came up with the knowledge, she came up with an alternative with Puerto Rico is because of traveling during a pandemic. And there is trip insurance with the company, uh, which they cover up to $2,000. But it, it could have potentially put a burden on our families because if a student was to contract COVID while on the trip and not be able to leave the country, the burden would have been on the parent to get their care for their student or us to keep a chaperone there or something along those lines. And with that, um, with Spain, it, it, it does require a passport. And that's a lot of pocket expense for a parent. So the domestic piece that she's talked about with Puerto Rico is a, is a more manageable, should the worst case scenario arise.
Yeah. I mean, I travel enough around the world, but I understand where you're coming. The experience of even going through getting a passport, it's a big deal. You know, I mean, not just money-wise, but it's a big deal for that person to get that.
To have that.
So I mean, I get all sides of this. Yeah, it's, the pandemic plays a small role into it. You know, I do see that because we don't know where we're gonna be a year from now with all this. We know COVID is gonna be out there. And like you say, what happens if somebody isn't exposed to it?
I, I pulled up the data in order to enter. Okay, so Spain is your, from the US to Spain.
Two more years.
2022.
Fall of 2022, so it's just a year from now. It's, your daughter would be a senior. Yep, yeah. So into Spain, now what you have to do is you have to show, show either proof of vaccination, and/or be something I'm missing. That you've had it and then a note saying that you're good to go.
What's the current coming back to the US though?
Coming back into the US, three days test. Before you come back. Whereas with Puerto Rico, it said, um, in the island, quarantine, COVID tested.
And this will be right now. We don't know where it's.
Yes, right. This is just what is currently, yeah.
So we don't know what the restrictions would be. But the thing about it is we do know COVID's gonna be, it's still.
So we state that this, are you looking for, like Mike had asked, are you looking for direction as far as Puerto Rico or Spain? Or are we just looking at the approval for the trip? And then, then it's kind of figured out from there? I guess.
Well, it, it, would it be too much to ask, um, approval and then, do you want me? Yes, that would be awesome. Approval for the trip and then I can send out, because then you could get your hard concrete number on. How many people did do the vote again? Do you want a Spain trip? But it's what you guys are more comfortable with, international or domestic.
Where they want to go, I mean.
If you look at the majority of votes, it's, I know we're hosting, we want to go in there. I, I think, my feeling on this is, we've got a lot of information. I think, you know, take this in, we'll have a discussion on, I think having an outreach team to answer some more questions.
Right.
Look at these numbers. And then I think in November, we take a vote on, you know, the trip, whether we're gonna approve it or not. I would like to kind of have a feel for some of the numbers. I mean, to me, it just, I hate to take Spain away from kids because it's a great experience. But the other side, if we can, especially coming off COVID, if we can dispose more kids and get more of them on a trip.
Right.
You know what? We bite and vote this year, we do Puerto Rico and then we move on.
Right, and because, and like I mentioned before, I would like it to be a Spain trip offered every two years because it is such a, an amazing, far-off, like dreamland to be able to go there in a way. Whereas Puerto Rico, due to logistics, is closer to achieve as a family basis. But due to the circumstances, I would love it to allow more students the ability to travel and to learn and to see that Puerto Rican, Spanish culture.
And I think Dean has a good point, you know, the students should have some say in this also. I think the idea behind this, let us reach out to you with more questions. We have our principal, superintendent Chase, but then have you here in the middle of the meeting also so we can have a little bit more discussion before we take the vote on this. So you're probably a better understanding.
Yes, and then I can get a number on how many of you would prefer Puerto Rico? How many of you would prefer insider Spain?
Yeah, more important students are and who are, because how does it go to feel about that? I mean, does that seem nice?
I'm with me, that's fine.
Excellent.
We'll definitely give you an answer in November.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks for being patient, Marri.
Under.
Yeah, we will next time. We won't make you be hit till the end. Okay, so last item we have is 9.1 is the emergency contract with Steins Bus Company to transport one of our routes. Superintendent Chase, you work on this, you post the information.
Yes, uh, as you know, we've struggled to keep our routes going. We've had Dean out for the whole, since the start of the school year. We've been subbing people into that route. And then we had Mike Johnson have to leave for some family medical. And so we, you know, given our shortage of bus drivers and shortage of staff, for a while we were asking parents to transport their kids from Route 5 in. We could, and we were able to pick up about 11 of them, um, on Mark's bus, but that, you know, got kids on the bus at 6:30 in the morning, which is too early for kids to be on the bus. These were, um, and I will say that they, you know, they, they probably would like to come and visit if we can get a, um, meeting going for, um, a planning meeting to talk a little bit more with, with the board about what they can offer moving forward. But anyway, um, they, uh, called back and said, you know, we can, we can pick up, we can pick up a route for you. And it makes sense for them to do Dean's route because they can come, they're coming from Gully anyway, or Gondic, excuse me, coming from the Gondic area. And so, um, it's, it's more costly than it would be to have our own driver, but we don't have our own driver. And by doing this, we're able to move Gary Schultz over to cover Mike Johnson's route, until Mike comes back. And then, and then Gary can step back and be a sub like he originally planned to do. And, uh, it's kind of wearing a bind and Steins were willing to step in and help us out of it.
So two questions, how many bus drivers are we short right now ideally?
I mean, ideally we'd have eight route drivers.
How many do we have now?
With, with Jerry, counting Jerry and counting, um, Gary, we would have seven.
So even without Jerry, what's that? We've got six then?
Overall, yeah.
Overall, okay. So ideally eight, and then we'd have some subs on there too. And the, the cost per month, $62.98, 14, is that plus fuel?
Plus fuel.
But we're in a bind now.
So this would run through you.
This would go through me.
Does this need to be updated as far as plus fuel in there? $62.98 a month.
Um, it's, it's the closure.
If you get down to every mile over 112 is $2.70 from your route. So the wording of it.
Oh, plus fuel on that entire road. Okay, got it.
I, I, I don't know what our other option is. We cannot have kids getting off us at 6:00, 8:00, 9:00, 10:00. No, we can't do it. We have all the nation.
You were, you were.
Yeah, I mean, you'd look at just spending four hours a day down here on a bus.
Yeah, I remember doing that when I was a kid. It's terrible. Getting way early, when the first ones on, when the last ones on, it took forever. Seemed like you'd get home soon if you walked.
So I, I mean, to me, this is, this is our best option right now. And if that, you know, if we find another driver, we can take it well, we still have, you know, I mean.
Motion to approve the contract. Listen.
Okay, so I have a motion by Director Christian, the second by Director Font, to bring the emergency contract with Steins Bus Company to transport one route for the remainder of the 2021, 2022 school year at specified costs. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion passes. Any reports? Any no reports? I think the only other thing we had on there, there's something we need to start looking at and it comes free from this Steins deal is we need to start, we need to put together a work session and decide which direction we're gonna go with. Transportation, um, there's not a huge urgency with it, but it's something we need to address probably sooner or later. At least start getting an idea of how we want to go forward with this. So suggestions. I mean, things are getting busy.
CEO. 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 The board members. Principal negotiations are coming up.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's true. We gotta get that, yeah.
So I think we can slide the bus licenses requirement and.
Well, the principals' negotiations.
We did that, oh, I'm looking on that. Some coming from the East, I hope they come on the way.
Just want to know, yes, they should have, oh, let's see. Do you guys want to try to plan a work session now or do you want to just kind of put out, put out the email with some feelers? You just kind of look at that in November, later, want to get holiday, later November, but then maybe. See what major member is or December.
Might work.
I'll send out an email to everybody and start to work on that. All right. And with that, our next regular meeting is Thursday, November 18th at 7:00 PM. And we should, we'll, we'll see where we are with everything, but hopefully back in conference room.
Prior to that meeting will be American Union Education Program hearing and the World Best Workforce hearing. I think we will start at 6.
Before that.
That's a before, it's before the board meeting and it's a public hearing. So basically we will be sharing information about how we've done over the last year with our American Union Education program and our goals on the World Best Workforce.
So we've been looking at, our next regular meeting will be the 18th at 7:00. But we probably have a special meeting at 6:00 PM, that same date. Any others? Anybody have anything else? If not, motion to adjourn.
So, second.
And a motion by Director Filio, second by Director Christian to adjourn. Anybody opposed? Need to adjourn.